Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. We are going to start off the agenda by reviewing and signing some bills and accepting some minutes. So first item on our agenda is to approve a bill for $420.22 to the Community Advocate for the April 28th, 2025 legal notices. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Onto the review and acceptance of meeting minutes. We've got quite a few that have been reviewed and they would include the meetings from March 30th, 2020, May 26th, 2020, August 11th, 2020, August 29th, 2022, and August 26th, 2024. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve.
Can I get a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. We're going to proceed on. We have a number of requests for continuations on some hearings. So the first request would be a continuation to our May 28th meeting. This is for the appeal of 20 Brook Street, Jeremiah Galant. These are two special permits. One is to Section 6, Table 1, for an in-law apartment. The second is for a, for a special permit, Section 6, excuse me, Section 7, Table 2, to an addition, to add an additional 37 feet from the front yard setback where 50 feet is required on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. Can I get a motion to continue the hearing, please?
I move to continue the hearing to the May 28th, 2025 meeting at 6:00 P.M.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Onto the next continuation. This is to hear the appeal for 24 Floral Street, the Residence A District, Michelle Kraus. This is a renewal of a special permit to Section 6, Table 1, to allow for the keeping of animals other than customary household pets on a parcel less than five acres. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to continue to the May 28th, 2025 meeting at 6:00 P.M.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. So continuing right along. It does appear that our other board members not going to be here. So I, as I invite you up, it'll be up to you whether you would like to, for us to continue to the next meeting or proceed forward. So. All right. So the first hearing, this is to hear the appeal of John Kuchar, 11 Plainfield Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, Table 1, to support creation of an in-law apartment on the second floor upon property located at 11 Plainfield Ave. in the Residence B2 District and the Limited Business Zoning District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 32, Plot 392000. Can I ask the appellant to please step forward? Good evening.
How are you doing this evening? Good, thank you.
You can have a seat and we'll... And you understand about the four-person board?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to proceed forward?
Yes.
Okay, great. So if you could just give us an idea of what you'd like to do. We do have notes in our, in our...
We are, would like to turn the second floor of the house into an in-law apartment for my mom.
Okay. Wonderful. Give me one second. I just need to hop in here. Okay. Great. I'm going to go through the board and ask for comments, questions. So Peter, would you like to start?
Sure. So it looks like you're just adding a kitchen on the interior. There aren't any exterior changes at all?
No. It's the same footprint that we have now.
Okay. And there's, there's a unique form of exit from the second floor?
Yes.
It looks like there's...
Yeah. We have a picture of it, too, if you...
Yeah, we took pictures if we needed any.
All right. And you understand that for an in-law, the in-law expires, the permit for an in-law expires at the sale of the home and only people who are a blood relative can live in the...
Yes.
Yes.
Those are just the standard conditions that we usually use. So, okay, I'm all set.
Great. Fran, questions, comments?
Yeah. Can this number two in our comments be avoided by a deed transfer to a family member? I mean, will we preclude that?
Um, I don't, I haven't heard of that, but I think, you know, regardless of any new person, even if it's a new family member owning the home, they would still need to come back before this board to renew the special permit for the in-law.
Yeah. Because I could see where, with a little, maybe with a little bit of slight, not slighting it, that's a bad way to put it, but the deed could be transferred in such a way as that the original owner might pass away or gone and still have it, have it stay within the family. In other words, the death of that person wouldn't be enough. Just question? I don't know. I hate asking questions I can't answer.
Well, that's what we're here for. We're here to ask questions, so it's good.
Just something I think I think.
That's okay. You're allowed to think.
Yeah.
That's good.
So...
Is that your only question?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, other than, do we bring up the doors?
Yeah, Peter asked about the door. We do have a photo in the drive. Let me show you.
And I think there is one question the building inspector wanted to ask was, excuse me, the interior stairwell that goes, you know, from the first floor to the second?
Yes.
If there could be just one door instead of the two, just, you know, I don't know, you know, if they both have locking features or not. Excuse me. But I think her, you know, potential question or, you know, worry would be that, like, if one, the bottom, was locked and someone couldn't get, you know, freely from top to bottom, you know, acting as a single family home. So...
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Justin, questions, comments?
Nope.
Okay. All right.
So what do we decide about the doors?
We haven't, there was not a, are you talking about the outside door or the inside door?
The inside door.
Okay. So we're, there was a suggestion from the Building Department, from the Building Code Officer, Enforcement Officer, that you, does she want non-locking or just removal of the door?
I guess non-locking. You know, we understand, you know, privacy door for upstairs, you know, totally understandable, but, but it was more of a question if it locked, if it was going to be locked, you know, just, just for her awareness.
Well, my mother lives downstairs and my mother-in-law, they're both good, they're good friends, so I don't think that he...
Yeah, it's two mother-in-laws?
Yeah.
Oh, that's wonderful.
That'd be wonderful.
That's, yeah, I'm aware, actually. That's great.
She's actually right here.
Oh, no, well, welcome.
Phyllis.
Does Phyllis want her door locked or unlocked? Let's ask Phyllis. There'll be a moment for a public, public comment, so maybe she'd like to respond.
Okay.
So, yeah, we don't think we have an answer quite yet.
Yeah.
But that might come up as we deliberate.
Yeah, I'm not too worried about it.
Okay.
It's not enough to break a deal or something.
Okay.
For me.
Louise, any other comments? Okay, great. All right. We're going to move on to the public portion of this meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this matter? Going once, going twice? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing?
All right. Let's move on to business. Can I get a motion?
I move to close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I get a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Me.
Fran, second. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. This is our first day with our, our new group, so we're welcome and we're happy you're here.
We're stumbling here and there.
Yeah, that's okay. We're doing the best we can.
Yep.
All right. Can we get a motion, please?
So I move to approve a special permit, Section 6, Table 1, to support creating of an in-law apartment on the second floor. I think I, I should add the conditions.
They're in the comment letter towards the end.
On the following conditions, that the in-law apartment shall remain or shall only be occupied by individuals who are legally related to the principal residence of the premises, and two, the rights authorized by the issuance of this special permit shall be limited to John Couture.
Yes.
And shall remain in effect only during their ownership and occupancy of the premises at 11 Plainfield Avenue in the Residence B2 District.
Can I get a second? Second. Justin? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All set?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Got through that one. Okay. All right. The next appeal is Carla De Silva, 3 Firebeck Avenue in Shrewsbury, for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7, Table 3, to construct a shed in the front yard setback where it is not allowed upon property located at 3 Firebeck Ave. in the Residence B2 District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 25, Plot 052000. Carla, if you could step forward, please?
Why am I having trouble?
Welcome?
Hello.
Have a seat. So if you could talk to us about what you are looking to do. We do have a lot of files here, but we'd be interested to hear what you are looking to do on your property.
Yes. So we are trying to do a shed in front of the house because on the back is impossible because of the topography on that. The, my husband and I, we work in epoxy doing, so we have a lot of equipments which we've been stocked in the garage and start to be very crowded in the garage, so we look at something that we can, you know, use to put those equipments on it and have a very good access to, you know, do the car to back and forth in front of the house as well. And also because equipment is very expensive, equipment to put right in the back of the house is something that it's very, also, because some equipment is like a $50,000, just one of them.
It's a 10 by 10 shed, is that correct?
It's a 10 by 20.
10 by 20?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And also I did the plot plan?
Site plan?
Mm-hmm. A new one. I don't know if I uploaded, I don't know if you get it?
I will take... That was one of our questions, so... Hold on.
Yeah, I get one. So it took a while until he, you know, for them, he was so busy.
Yeah.
Javet, Kevin from Javet's.
Yes.
But I have it here as well, if you, if you...
I can pull it up.
I gotta...
It would be helpful for us, if we don't have it in the file, if you have it there.
All right, Louise?
I do.
Put it on the screen. Well, I think we're okay, actually.
Let me just... Second?
What am I looking for for a comment? It, uh, can't seem to find the commented.
Oh, yeah.
It was the last one, Louise.
Yep, just bear with me. I am grabbing it. Okay.
Okay.
So she is on a corner lot, north of the scene, right here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. So I don't know, I, we sent one of our assistant planners, we had drafted a comment letter that went to you, and so we had a few application comments, and so getting this plot plan was one of them, which is great.
Uh-huh.
But now that we do see the exact setbacks to both front yards at that corner, it will require an additional, you know, application, which I can work with you because it needs to have the exact location stated in the appeal before the board can vote on it. So because to, of the zoning district and because it's in the front yard and needs to meet, which let me...
And because it's a corner lot?
Because it's a corner lot and so... 10 yard, oh, so...
He, he, I directed him about that and he put all the measure already on it, exactly what it is.
So you meet one, you meet one front yard setback for 31 feet, which is great, but then the other, the second one is 20 feet, and so we would need the request for 20 feet and to be in the front yard. To be exactly...
So it's 20, it needs to be 30?
Correct.
Got it.
Could we vote on, can we take the variance in front of us now?
The only thing is that she's going to have to come back again next month.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can approve it and you're just going to have to come back next month.
Right.
So I'll have to come back next month?
Yes.
But I can work with you tomorrow.
Uh-huh.
I can work with you tomorrow on that.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, on the application?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's two, it's two variances. So there's, there's the one that's before us tonight, which we can still vote on, but then there's still another application that you'll have to do to get everything.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it's the application that is missing.
Yeah.
Got it? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So our thoughts right now, and we're going to continue to talk to the other board members, is to do the first one and then Louise will work with you to come back next month for the second one.
Okay, sure.
All right. Fran, questions, comments?
Who, what is a material, I mean, the exterior finish of the shed is proposed to be, I saw that little picture where somebody photoshopped the shed into the front yard there.
Yeah, it was my...
Very nice. Well done.
Demarcation there, yeah.
We have like a two types. We can, you know, do even the, like, the wood slats. Also, we saw some that are, they are selling, like, they have like a, is a plastic, the lifetime plastic one, that you just make them together.
You're proposing a kit-type shed that made of polyurethane or something with steel reinforcement. Is that, am I getting this right?
I think so.
Yeah, but I think he's, my husband is just going to do with those wood slats on it and do the siding the same as their house.
Their house.
So it match.
Okay.
We want things to look...
Oh, I understand. Sort of match the house, existing house.
Right. The blue and white, like their house it is right now.
Is that going to be on a slab or on, I don't know, wood? What's the foundation?
Yes. He, it's a foundation. He's going to do the holes on it, put like the cement on it, do a very nice foundation because the area, the floor area, all, it's all like a, you know, uneven.
Yes, sure.
The topography there is very weird, so he has to do like a very nice and...
Have it to put a level.
Level up so then he can, you know...
The reason I'm asking is if you tear down the shed, you got a concrete slab sitting there now. I don't know what matters, but that's what you could be left with. Yo, I don't mind that type of construction. I actually built one of those sheds, too. Just don't tell anybody.
I worked with the floors a couple years. I know.
So you, you did with the concrete when you did?
No, we didn't use concrete. We used wood.
You used...
Wood treated lumber on gravel, just sitting on gravel.
Uh-huh.
With four by four treated lumber and build your way out and then set your floor for your kit right on top of the lumber of a wooden floor. That's the way we did it, so...
All right. Okay. All right. Justin, questions, comments?
Nope.
Okay. Everything's good?
Yeah.
Okay. Louise, anything else we need to consider?
Uh, no.
We've gone over everything?
Yeah. Now that we have the plot plan.
Wonderful. Okay. All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing?
Can I get a second?
Go ahead, Justin.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right. Can we try a motion, please?
Sure. So I, I think it makes sense to approve a variance here. The topography is clearly unique and challenging and that's what we need to, that's the criteria for variance, so...
Mm-hmm.
So I move to approve a variance under Section 7, Table 3, to construct a shed in the front yard setback where it is not allowed at 3 Fearback Avenue in the Residence B2 District.
Can I get a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. We'll see you back next month.
Thank you so much, guys.
You did a great job of explaining that, so thank you.
All right.
All right.
So Louise, when, when I can come, so you can help me tomorrow? What time?
All right. Next hearing, this is to hear the appeal of Elise Carr of 8 Caesar Place, Billrica, for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, Table 1, to create a customary home occupation bakery upon the property located at 10 Higgins Street in the Residence B2 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 13, Plot 06000. Can I ask the applicant to please step forward?
Good evening.
Good evening. Just a reminder, we do have a four-member board. You've heard that and you're willing to...
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, welcome. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Elise Carr.
Wonderful. If you could let us know what your intentions are.
Yeah, so I'm looking to utilize the residential kitchen in, at 10 Higgins Street and turn it into a residential bakery, utilizing the existing bakery layout or kitchen layout.
I see.
Yeah, so this, this was a continuation of a business we had in Billrica. We recently bought the residence at 10 Higgins and we're just looking to move that from Billrica to Shrewsbury.
So it's an in-home business currently now?
In-home business, yeah.
I see. Okay. All right. All right. Questions? Peter?
Sure. And I think some of this is probably covered in your application, but for this sort of thing, for a special permit, we have to think about things like, will there be any kind of nuisance to the neighbors? Will there be any sights, sounds, vibrations, all those kinds of things that might affect people and the enjoyment of their property? So the kinds of things we think about for in-home businesses are, are there going to be a lot of cars coming and going? Are you going to be keeping very early hours where people are coming to pick things up or very late hours? Will there be a smokestack sticking off there? You know what I mean?
Right.
Whatever. And so if you could just say a little bit about what your plans are in terms of people coming and going, where they'd park, what time of day you'd be operating, all those kinds of things, that gives us the kind of information we need.
So my goal is to utilize the same business method that I did at, in Billrica. So I always kept hours, so it was nine to 6:00 P.M. No one was allowed to pick up past that. I have a two-year-old, too, so we have to put her to bed anyways. So we utilized an online pickup system so customers could choose what time within that timeframe they were going to come and pick it up. That way it would also stagger customers. We also had maybe two customers a day. They would pull up right to the driveway and they would text me that they're there. I'd come out with their order and that was it.
Okay.
So it really didn't create any nuisance or anything on the street.
Just intermittent, people come in, pick up their order and leave?
Yep.
Yeah.
No walk-up service or anything?
Because it's a private home and we have a two-year-old at home, I always tried to maintain that no one came to my door.
Yeah.
Just for our safety in general because it's an online ordering system, so I really didn't know who was going to come and pick it up. So that way it was, they would text me and they get my, my phone number right after they placed their order and it would be a specific time, so I knew when, who was coming when.
I see. What are you going, what do you make?
So I do stuffed chocolate bars, cookies, brownies, confections.
Did you bring samples?
I didn't, no.
But what's worth and wrong?
Could you repeat the hours again?
So I usually do nine to six, unless a customer is specifically asking for something, but it never really happened.
So as you grow, these in and outs, in and outs, in and outs start to increase?
For my sanity, I try not to have a lot of customers, to be honest, but we do a lot of deliveries as well, too. So it does vary as well.
Okay.
Okay. It looks like you have plenty of parking there. It looks like in the driveway, so you wouldn't expect people to be in the street, probably.
Right.
Are you planning to have a sign or anything like that? Anything that might, that might be visible from the outside, I guess, is the idea?
So what I like to do is when I do know I have pickups, I have a little pickup sign just so customers know they're coming and they're not interrupting a neighbor or something and they can see this is exactly where I need to go.
With not a permanent...
It's just like a little, like, two by two sign that I just pop out.
No, it's a small sign.
Okay.
Okay.
And not permanent, something...
Right, not permanent, nope.
Got it. Okay. That's all from me.
Okay. Fran, you questioned out or?
Yeah, I've questioned out.
Okay, Justin?
Was there any, well, we talked about people come pick up orders. Is there any deliveries, anything like that?
Yeah, we do deliveries as well, yeah.
Yeah, in Billrica I did do deliveries, yes.
No, I'm sorry, like, supplies coming to your house?
Nope. We actually utilize Restaurant Depot, so I go grab everything and just bring it into the house.
She makes me go pick those things up.
Just love chocolate.
They're deliveries, they're just done by you?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, man.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved? Okay. Let's... We'll get a motion, please.
Sure. I move to approve a special permit under section six, table one, to create a customary home occupation bakery at ten Higgins Street in the residence B two district.
Can I get a second?
Condition.
Oh, sorry.
Excuse me, hang on.
Sorry. Just the standard ones.
Yeah. The following conditions. That the profession or customary home occupation is conducted by a resident of the premises. The use is clearly identical to and secondary to the use as a residence, and not in excess of twenty-five percent of the floor area of any one floor, which it sounds... And not more than two persons other than residents of the premises are regularly employed in connection with such use.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Happy cooking.
Thank you.
All right.
Fifty-two hand, oh, drop off those test samples there.
Okay. All right, moving along.
Moving right along.
Let's see.
Walcott Street.
Yep. Okay, next hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Habib Amani, nine Walcott Road in Shrewsbury, for a variance for the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, section seven, B eleven, to allow for a two-family dwelling to exceed the maximum floor area ratio of four-point-zero on property located at nine Walcott Road in the residence B two zoning district. Subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate thirty-two, plot thirty-five, four, zero, zero, zero. Good evening, and if you could state your name for the record, please?
Hi, Chris Adcock, the architect for the project.
Step ahead.
Thank you.
We've met before? You've been in front of this board?
Yeah.
So if you could...
So we're looking to convert the existing building from a one-family to two-family dwelling. The portion is recently built. And do you have drawings? Plans?
We have the plot plan.
Plot plan.
Let me just look.
And I guess we're trying to convince the board that it's not a detriment to the neighborhood, to being at the end of a one-way street, you know, cul-de-sac street. There's not a lot of neighbors. Some of the lots are even, maybe even empty, right, Habib? And we're up against power lines on one side. And Habib is really looking to sort of, you know, rent this out for additional income. Needed income.
And can you just expand on the floor area ratio?
The floor area ratio, we're at forty-four percent.
So that far it exceeds the, the ratio that, okay. And you're also going also in front of the planning board on this as well, correct? Is that Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
What will be...
We're going to go in order here.
I apologize.
That's okay, no problem. Peter, can you start us off?
Wonder if you could say a little bit more about the floor area ratio? This is an issue that I'm not super familiar with. I don't know if Louise, if you want to jump into.
You know, all levels, basement, first floor, common space, there's a little bit of common space, second floor. We're at about fifty-five hundred square feet. The site's approximately, you know, twelve thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-three square feet. Without, including the sheds, there's only two sheds on the property that are willing to be taken down if it helps.
Yeah. So it's the amount of living space essentially, based on how big the lot is.
Yes, just one.
Yeah.
And because, you know, the original addition as is to the single-family home was acceptable, but now that it's under the two-family use...
Oh, that's the idea. Okay, because of the two-family piece? Gotcha.
Yeah, and so I get, this planning board has discretion, you know, under the special permit, to go up to a certain point for the F. A. R., but they're just exceeding that.
Yeah, we're about, what, four percent over?
Oh, I see. Okay.
So it's forty-four percent.
It's originally thirty percent, then it goes to the forty percent if the board, you know, says that it's detrimental.
And you're at forty-four?
Yeah, it's pretty, kind of close.
That what you said, forty-four?
Yeah.
Basement area that's really not usable, and, you know.
Right, right, right. Okay. All right. And the structure's already, the shell of the structure is already complete, but it's not... Okay.
And we have some photos, if you'd like, see some photos.
They're not part of our record. If you give them to us, we keep, they become part of our file. But we also, you know, we have the street view and the satellite view and everything.
Dated yet, but I do have an aerial view.
That might be helpful.
And I've got it here. Google Street View already has it.
I don't think it's been updated.
Or not the street view, but the...
Yep.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what I want to say. Yep.
And we have a nice view, excuse the solar glare. This is the addition, you know, the whole house.
Yep, yep.
See?
Put that down to main. Justin?
View, it's at the end of the street.
Yep.
Yep.
So cul-de-sac right here, and is the power lines going through.
Up the right of way.
Leads to where we are now.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And there are other two families in the area.
I don't know.
Okay. I thought there were.
Out of there.
I believe there's one.
Yeah, my neighbor is two-family.
Yeah, across the street, right?
Yeah, let's, written all over the place. All right. Did you see? Slows down.
Way more information.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, that's helpful.
That's the addition there.
All right. Anything else that you'd like to add?
I think that's it.
Okay. All right. So you finish your line of questioning?
Mm-hmm.
Rand, would you like to?
Yes. My question is, I didn't run this up Google Earth or Street View or anything, I don't know. But what's the character of the neighborhood? Is this all single families with single occupants, or is there two families?
I think we're on the edge of the district, you know.
Yeah, my neighbor is two-family in front of our house. They are two-family. But next to me is one-family, and two sides, I don't have any neighbor. Honestly, there is three sides, is no neighbor. Just, I have one neighbor in, one side of me. In front is two-family. At the back, all is, what they call, the power line.
Yeah.
And at the end, it's all power line.
I mean, you kind of got, and sort of like an industrial area there, kind of looking on the, the new plaza there.
Over there.
Behind it.
Behind it. I built this addition just to survive. Two of my son, they are disabled, and I had some problem with power line. Either we did the ramp, and the ramp was a little bit under power line, but they approved it. And I think I provided the letter from the New England Power Line. They said, you can use it, because wasn't any, you know, more place to put the... We need that two-floor, because one of my son passed away last year, and still, my oldest son, he's on ventilator. We are twenty-four hours taking care of him. I'm not able, I do Uber at night. But now, sometime, he's on ventilator, we should be at home. We're looking to get this second floor as a two-family, we can rent it to take care of my son. He's twenty-two years, and he need, my wife, she can't do it by herself. We should be at home sometime, dropping oxygen. As you see, the fire department, always, my neighbor taking care when I do Uber. They came and checked, because if you see a fire department at our home, every year is maybe twenty, thirty time. He's dropping oxygen, we should go to UMass. We need this one just to be home and taking care of my son. With it, I think now is one year, we are in process. But everything's done, and we are hoping we can complete, and we can rent it to be a little bit, you know, more comfy and taking care of my son.
Okay.
We are in dead end, and all neighbors, I sent, and I asked them, they said we don't have any problem. And hopefully, we can, you know, go forward.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, that's good information.
Thank you.
Rand, questions, comments?
No.
Justin?
With the floor area ratio, does a basement factor into that? Is that how the math is?
The basement's included in that, so if it was taken out, it would be much below the, around the thirty percent.
Because you stated that you have no plans on using that?
No plans for the basement, right?
Like occupying it, finishing?
The basement was finished basement. I didn't, you know, I built just some of, I put all my, what they call, electrical in the new basement.
Yeah.
But the previous basement was finished already. It has the bathroom and everything.
Including it?
Oh, okay.
But...
It's not finished that much, though.
No. It's not for renting or something, it's just same as, you know, we're using that one, same as storage or... Utility space. Yeah, utility space there.
I understand. So that's, so that's included in, the sheds are also included in the floor area, right?
The sheds aren't included. One has been taken down. Yeah, one I taken, because, yeah.
So if you, if you took those things away, you'd be under the forty percent?
Uh, we'd still be over the...
It'd still be over a little bit.
Would, taking the basement away.
Taking the basement, right, yeah.
Taking the basement, we'd be under the forty percent.
Okay.
Okay. Good. Megan?
I don't think I have any questions right now.
Okay.
I think I'm good.
Okay. Great. All right. Louise, anything else that you'd like to add?
No, I think there were just a few waivers requested. The full, like, plot plan doesn't show, you know, some, you know, topography, like, some of those notes, but I think those were requested in the application, so.
Okay.
Actually, can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Is it going to be on-street parking for this rental? Like, are they going to park in your driveway, or do you plan to have it in park?
No, we have six parking lot.
Oh, do you, okay.
Yeah, we have six inside of my house. I have two closed parking, and I have at least six, you know, we make asphalt.
Okay, so you got a spot for them?
Yeah, six car can park there.
Sure.
Okay. We're good?
No.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Step forward, and if you could state your name for the record? Um, over here? You know the rules, Daydean.
Sorry, I didn't even save a lecture in here. Daydean Garnett, forty-three LeBlanc Road. And, God, this is a heartbreaking story, and I am so sorry for your loss. This was built very different from what it was approved. And it's, it's a two-family as opposed to what it was originally. Mr. Amani was here before to get approved for just an addition before. And I'm just curious, what happens when we approve things that have already been built? Like, what, what's our process, I guess, is more my question. So now we have an eleven-hundred-square-foot, three-bedroom apartment that we've now built. So what do we do now? We, we already have it. So, so what's our process now? It's already done. We can't say, I mean, there's, the frontage is, what, fifty, fifty-eight feet short for a two-family? There's that waiver. You said that one of the sheds can, I, I overlooked this property. I've been watching the building. It's, it's lovely, it's, there's a whole bunch of decks coming off. Now you're building some, a nice brick block structure. There's an additional structure that you're building now?
In front?
Uh, no, the whole side, you have all kinds of block work going in.
No, just for the walkway?
Yeah, I think that's the walkway, right?
Yeah, just a walkway.
Okay, there's, there's...
And around, if you see, around the ramp, just when we want to put the gardening, the dirt is not going to the ramp. Both side, just one block to, you know, the dirt is not going to the ramp and walkway. There is nothing contracted.
Because I know conservation was involved in everything, and...
I'm waiting for, you know, the contractor to make it, but still, we are waiting for the plan. If they approve, we can clean the in-front. We clean the side, the national grade they came, and they approve it, and we clean everything. Just that front, we have some things to do when we finish here, or they allow us to do, because the frontage, we don't know, we should make one walkway or two walkway. That was our plan. If they approve, just when I make it nice, nothing just came up. Just to avoid the dirt is going to ramp, and the dirt is going to walkway. There's nothing more came up.
It looks lovely. I was, I was good friends with all the sources. I did their plowing, I did their, I mowed their lawn, I, I was very good friends with them and everything, so.
That was the previous owner?
Uh-huh.
Is that was the previous owner?
Yes.
Yeah, last source.
Um, so, so it looks, it looks lovely, Mr. Amani, it really does.
Thank you.
But I, I guess my question is, like, what happens when somebody builds something, and then, you know, what if it doesn't get approved? We now have this, you know, there was a question whether it was going to be an A. D. U., but it can't be an A. D. U. So what happens if we don't approve it, and now this structure is there? And, and we don't have, you know, the, the variance ability? And I'm just concerned that, you know, it, it was built, and now it's there, so.
The plan was same plan. We didn't change any things. Just, you know, that was the first plan we, you know, we submitted. We didn't change any things. Just we want to change the one-family to family. And the plan, I think, if you see the plan?
Mm-hmm.
We got the variance first time. It was same plan, we didn't add anything else.
Okay, I...
It was one-family, and after my son passed away, and we should be at home, I got the advice from my friend, we can apply for the two-family, and you can rent it, you know? But it was the plan, we get the approval, yes. Just interior, we add something, you know? Fire separation, and from the building department, and they asked me to add one, what they call...
Separation.
Separation. And we didn't change anything.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I... Okay. Let's proceed through, and then we can go back for questions. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard on this matter? If you can step forward? If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Sachin, and I live on the Maple Avenue, three-twenty-eight, the duplex. And I have seen many letters from Mr. Amani, I didn't knew him personally. But I, my wife asked me, like, we keep seeing these letters, so just go hear him out. And again, I don't have any objections to whatever Mr. Amani is doing, so just for the record, so.
We love that a butters come to meetings, it's helpful to us to get all this information, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you for being involved.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's proceed through with some...
Sure. So I just want to acknowledge the comments, I appreciate you both coming. I think on, it's a very fair question about what do we do when there's a structure in place, and we're, and we're changing the use. This is a thing that comes before us from time to time. We had a situation like this recently with a building that was construction, constructed as an in-law, and it was connected. And I think what the law asks us to do is, when we're considering a variance, there are certain criteria, things that we're allowed to consider, and if those things are present, we're allowed to give a variance. And it's things like, is there something unique about the soil? Is there something unique about the shape of the lot? Or is there something unique about the topography of the land? Like, we saw this one this evening on your back with that very steep slope. But another piece that we're allowed to consider is, is there an existing structure on the property? And so this would be a situation where we're allowed to take into account the hardship that would be imposed if we said, we have to follow the rules strictly, even though you have this building that's already here. And so we're basically, the law asks us to take a look at the existing structures on the property, and say, you know, would applying the rules strictly, so in this circumstance, applying the maximum floor area rule and saying, nope, you're over, you can't use it as a two-family because of that, is that unfair based on something that exists about the property? And so here, we did provide the variance to allow the construction of this structure. And now the reason for that structure being built has changed. The rationale for it is not there, but the building remains. And so the question for us becomes, what's an equitable result? Taking into account the fact that this building is there? Do we say, no, you can't use it, or do we say something different? And so it's, it's complicated, but that's, that's part of the mission of the board, is to try to take these hard cases and say, what's a fair result here? Or can we enforce the spirit of the rules in a circumstance where, if we followed the rules very strictly, we might end up with something that, that feels unfair, like a building that you can't use, that you've already built? And so I just wanted to acknowledge, that's a fair question, and it's something that we take very seriously and that we think hard about. So that would be my comment. I don't know if anyone else from the board has any comments?
Any other comments?
No, he addressed what I was going to add.
That was a master class in zoning. Appreciate that. Okay, well, if there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion, please.
Sure. So I, so on, you know, sort of along the lines I was saying, I think here, based on the existence of this structure already, I think that we have the justification for a variance under the law. So based on that, I move to approve a variance under section seven, B sub-eleven, to allow for a two-family dwelling to exceed the maximum floor area ratio of four-point-zero. And also to approve waivers under sub-H, J, L, M, and N, I believe, at nine Walcott Road in the residence B two district.
There's also a request for a waiver of the fee.
I don't know, do we have that on here?
Comment letter.
Yeah, it's, um, it's under third comment.
I missed it, too.
Suggests the board waive the fee of one of the variances. We could pass that on to...
So, and also to waive the fee of one of the variances.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks.
One new business.
Insubstantial change request.
Oh, yes. Okay, moving on to new business.
He is online.
Uh, and this is, um, and it's insubstantial change request from Point at Hill Farms, uh, five-twenty-six Hartford Turnpike. Louise, could you talk to us about that?
Sure, and we do have, um, head op here, online.
There's also sign, one.
Yes.
Yep.
He can give a little background?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for hearing this, uh, request for an insubstantial change. I had submitted a letter and some materials, uh, showing the sign that we're asking permission to put on building. It's nine inches tall and about fifty inches wide, and it says the Elmwood, which is the name of the community. If I have screen share ability, I could share, but I also know I submitted...
I can share it as well.
Yeah. Yeah, that's exactly the sign we're talking about. You, the second page of this shows kind of how it looks in scale on the whole building. It's above that person, so it's, it's very small and subtle on the building, but the goal is to aid in wayfinding and help people know that this is the main door. This is where you come into the lobby and the leasing, uh, and just make it a clearer, better experience on-site.
All right. Louise?
Yeah, and I think the request tonight...
Lighting, I mean, can I ask them?
So, yeah, there's, it's just the sign, um, and I think tonight before the board, it's just whether or not this is insubstantial or a substantial change, you know? Um, and if they would need to come back for further review.
Okay. Um, any questions, comments, Peter?
Um, no, I think it definitely meets the criteria to me for an insubstantial change. Very small, can't really notice it. Um, no issues here.
Okay. All right. Questions, comments?
Yeah, I, are you going to light, is there going to be spotlighting to the sign?
No.
Or nothing?
Correct, it's just a metal sign.
Justin, questions?
No, ma'am.
Megan?
I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good as well. All right, um...
So we just take a vote? Yeah, no public hearing, so, okay. So I, I move to approve an insubstantial change request, uh, for the Point at Hills Farm, uh, at five-twenty-six Hartford Turnpike.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Enjoy your sign.
And, um, next up is an adjournment, so if I could get a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right.
Are we no longer recording?
We are.